If I could please call the January 18th Melville School District Board of Education meeting to order. If we could stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next I would like to do a roll call. Tori Belkey.
Here.
I'm Peggy Hassler. Scott Hoogrich.
Here.
Patrick McKelvey.
Present.
Jean Preto.
Present.
Jeff Woolman.
Here.
Grace Wright.
Here.
Okay, if I could get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, I would like to talk a little bit about the candidates for the Board of Education. Ten Melville School District citizens have filed their candidacy for four positions on the Melville Board of Education. The candidates in order of filing and as their names will appear on the ballot are as follows, and if you're here, if you want to stand for a second, that'd be great. Peggy Hassler, that's me, I won't be standing. Jean Preto, Mike Moore, Bob Mahaycheck, Sasha Schmidtkens, that's a tongue twister, sorry Sasha, Venky Palaman, okay, and three-year term candidates, two positions available, Patrick McKelvey, Amy Summers, Tori Belkey, and James Simakitis. Okay, an election will be held on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. Melville School District will provide more information about each candidate in March through the Melville Messenger Print Newsletter and on the district website. All right, moving on to recognition of staff, students, and community volunteers. First is Parents as Teachers, Erin Amador. Amador. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Board of Education, I'm Erin Amador, Parents as Teachers Coordinator.
And I'm Tiffany Schwegel, the Director for Melville Early Childhood. Tonight, we want to acknowledge two organizations that have partnered with us in the past year. Our campus spans over thirty-one acres, and until recently, much of it was not easily accessible. As we sought community partnerships, our goal was to enhance our outdoor learning experiences.
The first organization, Parents as Teachers, would like to acknowledge is the Kiwanis Club of South County. They sponsored a trail that enables all learners and families to access an outdoor space aligned with our curriculum. At a recent group connection, a parent of a child in a wheelchair expressed immense joy as her daughter explored on our campus for the first time. This trail now provides access to over a thousand students.
Additionally, Melville Early Childhood recognizes the Geometry and Construction class at Melville High School. Thank you to Stephanie and Robert that are here tonight. Through their collaboration, we were able to incorporate an accessible treehouse in the outdoor classroom. The enthusiastic response from families, students, and staff highlights the shared desire of the expansion of outdoor learning. Tonight, we acknowledge these clubs for their contributions and anticipate the lasting impact they will have on our community for years to come. Thank you for supporting our programs and making a positive difference in the lives of our children.
were presenting together, so that was also, Erin was joined, obviously, with Tiffany Schwegel. Next is MNEA, Deana McKelvey.
Hello, good evening, thank you so much, I am Deana McKelvey, and I am President of Melville MNEA, and tonight, we're so excited to honor two families. One is from Parents as Teachers and the other from Early Childhood. If Freya and her family and her teacher could please approach the podium.
Good evening, my name's Elaine Deroe, and this is Freya Oaks, she's been in my classroom the last two years, so I'm gonna read the paragraph that we wrote about her and all her growth. Freya is such a sweet girl who is happy and loves school. She smiles at all who greet her on her way into the building. Freya also has so much to share with her teachers and is aware and accepting of her friends in her classroom. She helps them by modeling new language and handing toys and manipulatives back to them when they are dropped. She is a good friend and student and has shown so much growth in not only her pre-academics and teacher activities, but also with feeling like she is a part of a group and a community that loves and accepts her. Freya is a hard worker, and it shows through her growth and her communication. She is attempting new words both with a device and verbally. She is attempting new activities that feel hard for her and coming for comfort when she's hurt or feeling upset. Her parents are her biggest fans and best support system, and we credit her continued success to them in sharing all they know about Freya with us.
So, when we award a family from Parents as Teachers, we award the entire family because that's who we're celebrating in that program. So tonight, I'm so excited to present this award to the Verde family, so if they could The Verde family, Katie and Zach, are incredibly welcoming to of our program and foster wonderful conversations regarding their family well-being. They are receptive to the evidence-based research we provide regarding child development and exhibit numerous parenting behaviors that will continue to guide their son. Vito and reaching his full, their son Vito, and reaching his full potential. It is clear they understand the impact that early childhood has on the growth of a well-rounded individual, and they support Vito by leading age-appropriate activities, asking open-ended questions to the educator, and attending our group connections to network with other families. It has been a joy to work with their family.
Next up is open period for patron comments, and we do not have anyone signed up this evening, so we will move on to student achievement. So this time, only Parents as Teachers, I assume. Are you presenting together? Nope? Okay, so Erin Amador again. You are doing together, or no? Oh, you're trying to confuse me.
Good evening, my name is Erin Amador, and I am the Parents as Teachers and Early Childhood Coordinator, and I am honored to be here tonight representing Parents as Teachers. In our first celebration this year, we're excited about the growth in staffing and services. This expansion has allowed us to truly offer universal services to our community. It involves doubling our visits, conducting community screenings, and providing babysitting at Moms Club. These subtle adjustments have played a crucial role in achieving the increased service numbers that you'll see tonight. Our second celebration revolves around our community engagement, which has been instrumental in supporting our expanded programming. Tonight, you witnessed our acknowledgement of the Kiwanis Club's support, and together with our outstanding cabinet, our early childhood partners, our district principals, and our dedicated parent educators, they have guided us to reach this celebration. As you can see above, we have focused our efforts on several components. First, we are working collaboratively with our early childhood partners and marketing all events for both sides of our program. We know that our students at our level are going through a crucial stage of development, and the greatest gains will come from being in both our programs. That is what you see in Goal 1 and 4. So far for this year, we are at sixty-five percent of families having both a resource connection and event attendance, and we are serving forty-eight percent of students in early childhood. Our second area of desired growth comes in alignment with an initiative to support higher academic achievement. We are now providing a form of tiered intervention to even our low-average scoring students. We have made the change to reflect this by adapting our cutoff score to the above-stated seven percent. Our third goal is a point of pride for our staff. Our goal was to increase screenings by ten percent, and before I say this number, I wasn't even sure that you could grow this much, but our team grew one-hundred-and-eighteen percent in their screenings, and our goal for visits was to increase by thirteen percent, and we grew by sixty-four percent. Parents as Teachers is a free program for all Melville families with children from prenatal to kindergarten transition. Services we provide are family visits, screenings, resource connections, group connections. Educators are certified in two state-mandated curriculums. Staffing-wise, we have thirteen total educators, four of which are full-time, one administrative assistant. We also have a screening team made up of eight trained screeners and a facilitator. This is the increase in services we previously mentioned. The listed screenings include two developmental assessments we utilize, the ages and stages for the birth-to-three-years age group, and the Dial 4 for our three-years-to-kindergarten population. Visit numbers encompass instances when one of our certified educators conducts a personal family visit, whether in a home, a school, or community center, with each lasting an hour. These visits follow one of two curriculums and concentrate on four areas: child development, developmentally-centered parenting, family well-being, and parent-child interaction. Our educators and screeners recognize the program improvement goal, and they actively work to achieve this. They also emphasize this is just the beginning. As you can observe, we've made some new additions to our staff. These include a trained screening team that will be entering four local daycares this spring, with estimates suggesting an additional four hundred students will be screened. This year, we expanded our full-time staff from two to four, enabling us to increase the number of families they can serve. It's worth noting that all educator positions receive higher reimbursement from the state compared to the payout per visit or screening. These staff additions contribute positively, both in terms of supporting students and maintaining fiscal responsibility. Currently, our program has no waitlist, as you can see above. Why is it crucial to keep the waitlist minimal? Early intervention. Our services are provided free of charge to all Melville families, allowing us to facilitate early intervention by reaching every home of our Melville students. This provides an opportunity to initiate developmental screenings and offer support to families. Reimbursable income. Having minimal waitlist is essential for capturing additional reimbursables. In the fiscal year we had last year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we could have scooped up an extra forty-one thousand in reimbursement if we had had the necessary staffing in place. I hope you've had the opportunity to read the listed outcomes above, that our families report from being in Parents as Teachers. These results mirror the mission of our program and highlight why our educators do what they do. We have some upcoming opportunities that we're genuinely enthusiastic about. Firstly, in response to the increasing demand for early intervention, we're launching a mobile screening unit in the spring. Our goal is to identify students in our community who might have traditionally not received support until kindergarten. Secondly, a celebration that has been four years in the making is dedicated to our partners at Rogers Elementary. Dr. Kenoia alongside Bailey and Lindsay have played a crucial role in collaborating with our educators to establish our very first Parents as Teachers playroom. This room will provide a child's first exposure to a classroom experience, and furthermore, more support for families in their parenting practices. Looking at this photo, I see an incredibly passionate group of educators. These educators take the job of being a family's first introduction to Melville very seriously, and I am beyond honored to represent them here tonight and to continue to grow with them and our early childhood partners. Here is Director Tiffany Schwegel to tell us more about early childhood.
Did you want me to just go ahead and start?
That's fine, yeah.
Thank you, Erin. Good evening, Board of Education. As stated previously, I am Tiffany Schwegel, the Director of Early Childhood, and Erin will be here with me tonight as the coordinator for early childhood. We'd like to begin by expressing some positive news. The first noteworthy development is the enhancement of our outdoor classroom. Collaborating with Geometry and Construction in Kiwanis of South County, we successfully incorporated an inclusive treehouse and a pathway, providing our students with the opportunity to engage with curriculum through exploration. We anticipate further collaboration with these partners and also plan to extend the space in partnership with the Missouri Department of Conservation. Another achievement that brings us pride is our accomplishment in establishing an early childhood classroom at Blades Elementary. Through collaboration with Dr. Booker, we have successfully introduced twenty-four additional spots at Blades, and the majority of these children will continue their educational journey into elementary school at Blades. Following the inclusion of a classroom at Blades, we currently have educational spaces at seven different locations, including six elementary schools and the John Kerry Early Childhood Center. In total, we now have sixteen classrooms. In the last three years, we have successfully expanded our overall enrollment, providing increased access to early childhood education for more children. Comparing our enrollment figures on December 1st of each year, we have seen a rise of eleven students since last year and a total increase of forty students over the past two years. Our collaboration with Parents as Teachers has proven beneficial in identifying students with special education needs earlier through their screening process. We anticipate that an additional sixty to seven more students will qualify for special education services before the conclusion of the school year. Due to the growth of forty students over the past two years, we have been able to introduce nine positions within a single year. Importantly, all these positions are reimbursable by the state, enabling us to offer increased support to our students. Every year, our teachers utilize the SRSS assessment to track each child's progress in the realm of social-emotional learning. The initial assessment occurs in the fall, usually when children are entering school for the very first time. As evident from the data, there is an observable increase in internalizing behaviors among students compared to previous years. Furthermore, we are observing patterns in externalizing behaviors as well. We are closely monitoring both individual and whole-group progress and plan to reevaluate the results after the assessment concludes later this month. In response to these trends, we are consistently refining our Tier 1 instruction by placing a greater emphasis on social-emotional learning. In an effort to align with kindergarten students, we have opted to modify the assessment tool used for gathering kindergarten readiness data. Starting this year, we have implemented ESGI for all pre-K students and observed that our students are exhibiting robust pre-academic skills upon entering. We plan to administer this assessment two more times throughout the year, track growth, and make necessary adjustments to our instructional approach. Our program is driven by five key goals. We are actively addressing and working on Goals 1, 3, 4, and 5 with a comprehensive evaluation planned after the winter benchmarks. As for Goal Number 2, we have currently achieved a seventy-two percent participation rate from our families in events outside of the regular school day. Additionally, we are collaborating with Parents as Teachers to organize three more events during this school year, historically known for high attendance. Based on our progress, we are confident in meeting this particular goal. We are very excited about upcoming things that we have planned. We plan to continue expansion of our outdoor classroom, we continue to align with kindergarten for the curriculum, and we will continue work on possible expansion of our program. We would like to express our gratitude to our students, families, staff, Parents as Teachers, and all board members for their unwavering dedication and support of our program. The success of our program is truly a result of the collaborative efforts and strong partnerships with each of you. Thank you.
I just wanted to acknowledge one of the things that you touched on in your presentation. I teach pre-K at Faith Early Childhood, and you all have sent your screeners out to push in and do the Dial screenings, and we are so grateful to have that partnership, not only for Faith, but for those students who, shoot, ninety-five-plus percent of them will be students enrolled in Melville as kindergartners, and so it's been a wonderful partnership, and we are just beyond grateful for, I mean, you've had, I think, you've had many people out on multiple days, and a majority of our families have taken advantage of that, so thank you so much, because that's made a big difference, and then for us too to get that feedback as a teacher, so thanks.
Thank you, Tori. That's so good to hear.
I know, see, that's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I think it's great to see the success that you guys have had and the growth that you've had over the last several years, because I think it's really gonna enhance the academic performance of the district over the coming years, so I'm really excited about that. I was also, I also wanted to mention that I saw a wonderful photo on Facebook today of you guys helping to install a door. Now, I knew that you guys were great educational leaders, but I literally did not know you were helping with building maintenance, too, that's pretty amazing.
We have many hidden talents.
I guess so.
Okay, and I want to mention to the public that board questions are asked in advance of the meeting, and so they are all posted on, the questions and answers are posted on e-boards if anybody would like to take a look, but I want to chime in on how wonderful it is to see your growth, and especially that we get state funding for it, and, you know, that's, that's, I was kind of thinking to myself, I've never heard of this, how'd that get paid? I'm like, whoa, that's neat, so what a great thing to learn. But yeah, thank you to all of your staff. My kids participated in Parents as Teachers and all graduated from Oakville, so, you know, it helped them along the way.
And it was thrilling to see there's no waitlist, that's just amazing.
Yeah, it was one of the board questions, did you guys miss a line?
I loved that question.
Yeah, what a great, what a great response.
That was a wonderful thing, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to governance, Prop S update, Steve Wendell.
Good evening, Board of Education, my name is Steve Wendell, I'm the Melville Construction Manager, and I'll be doing the Prop S update tonight. We have our list of completed Prop S projects, we did not add anything the last two months, we're getting close on a couple, but we haven't added any tonight, so the last ones were the Melville High Ballfields. And then for the individual project updates, Beerbaum Elementary, the Phase 2 work in the back of the school for the library, music and art, and other classrooms continues. We have our footings, we're basically done except for the east side of the site where we're still allowing some heavy equipment to enter the perimeter of the building, and we have this month started on our foundation walls, so we're gonna be coming up out of the ground, it's gonna start to look a little bit more like a building. And from utilities, we did finish the sewer tie-in, and all of the underslab plumbing is complete just in the last week, so our upcoming focus is really, the foundations are gonna be our heavy focus over the next month, and then we'll get into the floor slab and then the structural steel, so. Point Elementary, we completed our drywall, drop ceiling, flooring, and some of the scope that's left is the ADA handrail, we are expecting receipt of that in January, late January, and then the casework for the office and the teacher's lounge and workroom, we're expecting also late January. So we did finish one of the classrooms, we turned that over to the school, I think they already used it for some testing, and then January, we'll do the teacher's room and the bathrooms down the hall, and then March, April for the office, and that's, once again, that we're waiting on that fire-rated storefront, really, the office scope is mostly complete, we're just gonna be waiting for that, for that special storefront. Okay, Melville High School, it looks a lot better there this month at Melville. We basically have all of our scope complete except for some punch list items, we are waiting, both at Melville and at the next update here, the John Kerry, we're waiting for some small electronic components so we can actually put that vestibule into service. We need a couple of components to help actuate and unlock the inner doors. But everything else, all of the, you know, all of the carpentry and electric, you know, all the security windows, they've all been installed, everything is, looks like it's in working order except for a couple of small items, which we should get late this month. Same at John Kerry, but it's nice to look at the photo there, it looks really good, the storefront was installed, the windows installed, all of the secretary's desk is all complete, and we're just also waiting for a couple of little electronic components. Okay, then our outlook, Woolwind and Oakville Middle, we did complete the bid, in fact, next item on your agenda, Michael, Mike Gag will be presenting that bid so that we can proceed on those two schools. Berkeley, Beasley, and Fordor, we did send the bids out, they are out as of right now, and they're due back on the 30th of January. And then right now, we're finishing some of the details on mosaic design for the security entrance and the office. That should be bidding here very short, you know, very soon, and we should be back next month for that, for that bid conclusion, and then following up, we'll still do Trout Wine and Washington later this year. I mentioned last month, we are still back to some conceptual concepts on Washington, so I did push that bid date back a little bit into the summer, and that we would be starting construction this fall, and then Mosaic Phase 2, which was the accessibility scope, which is the elevators, we'll be doing that next summer. And then the finances are updated, and then I'll pause if there are any questions. Nope, all right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next is Oakville Middle School and Woolwind bid, Mike Gag.
Good evening, Board of Education, I am Mike Gag, Director of Facilities, here tonight to present on two additional security vestibules. One is Oakville Middle School and the other is Woolwind Elementary. These are upgrades to security vestibules at Oakville and Woolwind. This will provide more security setting for students, staff, and visitors. The school office will be better able to control how visitors enter the school during instructional The school office will be better able to control how visitors enter the school during instructional hours. The project will be paid through, through the facilities Prop S capital budget. I would like to move to approve the lowest qualified bidder submitted by Aspire Construction Services in the amount of $1,026,010, which includes contingency and professional and allowance fees. With that said, I may, any questions?
And there are some questions on the web, on the e-boards that people already asked.
Should I sum it? You made the motion.
I'll go ahead and remake it. Can I please get a motion to approve the lowest qualified bid by Aspire Construction Services in the amount of $1,026,010, which includes contingency, professional, and other allowance fees?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on to advocacy, 2024 advocacy positions, I believe it's going to be Jeff Woolwind and Jean Prado. Are you in on this, Jean?
This is circling back to what we had last month, where normally our advocacy positions are done in December. We changed that to January, so that way we get some foothold on what's going on in the legislature. From a perspective of what's going on, it's going fast, it's going furious, and there's lots of stuff going on in the legislature. So this is stating our advocacy positions for 2024, and we'll go through them and explain what they are. The Melville R9 Board of Education adopts these advocacy priorities for 2024 in the following areas. Pre-K. The Board supports legislation and policies that provide for collaboration and partnership between existing community preschool programs, high-quality early childhood training and leadership development, increased funding and testing standards for pre-K students to find learning disabilities earlier, state licensing requirements and standards for all early childhood programs, state funding for early childhood programs and leadership development, support for the, supporting the parents and teachers function, including staffing and training, voluntary free and equitable preschool opportunities for all families. School safety and security. The Board supports legislation and policies that provide for a safe education environment that concerns itself with the prevention of bullying, cyberbullying, misconduct, discrimination, and sexual harassment. Safety of students and adults on buses, at bus stops, and on school grounds. Schools having access to school district's safety coordinators' professional development and training, as well as sufficient resources to prevent and address school violence. Development and revision of high-quality emergency plans, sharing best practices at the local and state level, coordinating mental health and behavioral risk programs at the local and state level, state funding for immediate access to trained first responders as well as a single statewide safety reporting system.
I'll take it, Jeff. Open enrollment. The Board opposes legislation and policies that would allow students to attend schools outside the district they live in unless the legislation meets all the following requirements. All local, state, and federal funding stays within the resident district. No school district must accept non-resident students if they do, if they do accept non-resident students. They may limit the number of grade level of students admitted. However, the school district cannot refuse to admit students based on race, color, religion, gender, national origin, ancestry, disability, migrant status, English language learner status, unhoused status, or prior student performance. Measures are taken to prohibit transfers that would foster racial segregation, economic segregation, or limit resources for special education students. Parents or the receiving school district handle student transportation, as well as any related transportation funding. Measures are taken to prohibit recruiting or transferring for participation in athletics or other competitive activities. Students who wish to enroll in non-resident district for the following school year must apply and notify both districts no later than March 15th of the current school year, regardless of extenuating circumstances, as well as make at least a one-year commitment to the receiving district. Legislative mandates. The Board opposes legislation and policies that support any legislation that reduces public schools' ability to safeguard students. Establishing programs are requirements for public schools that are not based on sound education and instruction principles, nor any public oversight for teachers, curriculum, or materials. Establishing programs and requirements that are not properly funded are programs that have no public financial review or oversight. Any legislation that restricts existing parental rights, any public measures that reduce education funding. Healthcare. The Board supports legislation and policies that provide for mental health, increasing state and federal funding for better access to mental health services at all grade levels, more funding and more personnel for state-based services, expansion of Medicaid support for public schools, full federal funding of Medicaid with maximized funding of Medicaid to schools, simplified enrollment processes for Medicaid enrollees, more rigorous review of all aspects of the unwinding process for current enrollees. English language learners. The Board supports legislation and policies that provide for funding increases for the purpose of adding EL staff to support learning standards, earlier EL aid in both pre-K and K-12 education levels.
So our recommendation is we vote and put a motion forth to approve these advocacy priorities for the 2024 school year. And I'd like to make the motion to make that recommendation. Do you have a second?
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh, sorry, I meant to approve, sorry. My microphone wasn't on. I'm an aye for approve.
Okay, motion carries seven, zero. I do want to mention, though, that there is a whole committee that works on the advocacy positions, made up of administrators, teachers, community members, and then Jeff and Jean and myself this year. It rotates. But I also want to thank, especially Jeff, he puts in an unbelievable amount of time on this, has an entire spreadsheet that I think will eventually be accessible to the public, that he keeps track of the progress of all the bills, and you can click on them and read all about them, and he, I don't know how he finds the time to do it all, but he does want.
Basically, it started as a spreadsheet project, and then I realized that a lot of information is not helpful if it's not accessible and available to people. So it's going to be going on to the website as it goes through a bit of an evolution into a Google Sheet.
And I'd like to add that we're always looking for people who are willing to become more involved with contacting lawmakers in our state who are responsible for making laws that affect our schools. So if you are willing and interested in becoming more involved with our advocacy committee, we would be more than willing to help you learn how to become involved with that. So please let us know. You can contact any one of us on the board, and we'll help you figure out how to do that. And that goes for everyone in the room. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Okay, next is Health Services data, Dr. Adam Smith.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Adam Smith, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. I will be presenting the Health Services report this evening. So I wanted to share, I think this picture kind of encompasses everything. This picture is of Lead Nurse, Jen Ahearn. She's also the, she's the district lead nurse. She's also the John Kerry Early Childhood Nurse, so a lot of things are early childhood and PAT tonight. She is assisting Sebastian in a surgery for Pikachu when they recently at John Kerry. So I think this just goes to the level of care involvement and compassion that our Health Services team has for the students and staff that they take care of every day in our school district, and they really just have an integral role in all the work that happens in the school. Some professional learning that they've really been working on. Nurse Ahearn takes care of all the early releases and different activities that the nurses work on. Most recently, they spent time recertifying in their CPR certifications for just their licensure and for also that support in our schools. Our team is also really heavily involved in the Suburban Area Nurse Association, as well as Missouri and National Association, so they stay up on best practices, as well as just learn what's going on in the world of school nursing as that evolves over time. Also, we are, have a great relationship and a lot of good working agreements with the Melville Healthcare Professional Association that our Health Services team is involved with these. The next slide is just some facts and figures. So you can see we have our team, we have registered nurses, licensed practical nurses, as well as healthroom assistants. When we look at our registered nurses, those individuals have either an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree in nursing, so they've had a little longer extension time in their school nursing learning time. And they also are enrolled with participating in patient care, including medication administration, individual healthcare planning for students, input into 504 plans, as well as just the overall care and treatment of student medical needs while they're on campus or on activities, trips, et cetera. Our licensed practical nurses have a shorter nursing requirement for their education. However, they are able to administer medication under the supervision of our registered nurse. They're also involved in student first aid, charting, and also immunization record recording that happens for every student throughout their career when they're in school. So that are some of the things that they do just on the daily as far as their licensure and their education. I always think this is always a staggering number. So from the first day of school until last week, when I made the report, just total visits of people that have checked in and had a conversation or a need from a school nurse in our district is 98,113 visits. And I'll kind of break that down later in the slides. Some additional facts and figures. This is student healthcare needs. Now, in the board questions, it's broken down with a little bit more data. I broke these into multiple slides, just so they're a little easier to read, but you have the full slide in the board questions. But these reported healthcare needs are either taken through the family update annually for our returning and existing students, or when a new student in the family enrolls during the enrollment process, there's a level of healthcare information that we ask for to support student needs when they're at school. So just looking at the pie chart, red is our largest number on this particular chart. So we have 941 students that have a report of asthma as a medical condition in our school district. Blue is our next largest area, which is allergies. That encompasses 422 students that have allergies. We have 263 students that have a life-threatening food allergy. We have 154 students that have a life-threatening allergy to an insect, and we have five students that have a life-threatening allergy to latex. When we look at yellow, which is kind of the next largest part of that pie, those are our students that are deaf and hard of hearing. We have 104 students that are deaf and hard of hearing. 62 of those students have no assisted devices to participate in their school day. Five students have frequency modification systems that the teacher wears to help support the amplification of the sound and talking in class. 33 students have hearing aids, and four students have cochlear implants. The next set of this particular healthcare needs, red is the largest section of there. This includes any mental well-being and mental health reported healthcare need that students have in the district. Right now, we have 2,983 students that have reported a healthcare need on their enrollment or their update. These could include attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, anxiety, autism spectrum disorder, bipolar disorder, depression, obsessive-compulsive disorder, oppositional defiant disorder, and post-traumatic stress. So that encompasses that group of students as what they've reported on their enrollment. Also, teal, which is our next largest number, those are students that are getting routine medications. So these are students that come to school and either in the morning or lunch, or maybe both, have a daily medication that's taken on campus under the administration of our nurse. So we have 128 students in the district that have that kind of service a day. And then the next largest area on this particular pie chart is the light blue area, and that is our seizure disorder students that have epilepsy or another form of a seizure disorder, and there are 109 students currently in the district that have that healthcare need. When we look at just the district healthroom visits, again, the larger, the larger charts in the board notes, I broke it down into two separate slides. This is, again, from the first day of school until last week. Total visits, again, that red there is 98,113 visits. Now, 75,600, 264 of those are for a reason other than a medication administration. So there are about 75,200 visits that are for just anything from a Band-Aid to temperature check to possible other analysis by the nurse and diagnosis to be seen by someone else medically or a call to the parent. Our medication visits is the yellow pie section there, and that's 22,849 as of last week. And then green is our next largest chunk of this particular pie, and that's 4,430 students were sent home ill from school so far this school year by a healthroom individual. All right, this next chart is just more visit information. So our team really does a great job of communicating. So the yellow pie chart is telephone calls. They have made 13,345 phone calls, and that could be to a parent, could be to a medical provider, could be to any wraparound care team that the student that we have a release to support at the school and have communication between school and those individuals. So the team does a really good job of communicating. Red is our next largest area. That's 1,900, 1,000, sorry, 937 visits, and that would be any visit that's made by a staff member, a parent, or maybe a guest that maybe needed something that was visiting in the school. And then blue is the final number that I'll talk about in this particular pie chart, and so there's been 1,226 reported and confirmed cases that have happened with COVID with a student at home that has been reported to the school nurse by the family so far this year. When we're looking at some upcoming things, this group's really working to advocate for their needs, as well as just be on the cutting edge. As you can see, they have a lot of visits, so they're really, this team does a lot of work to keep people safe, healthy, and make sure that we're collaborating around student health needs so they can participate fully in school. So they've been working with a team of individuals across all levels to really look at their policies and procedure handbook as part of some of that alignment that they do, also that relationship of how their work is into our board policies and the policies and procedures that we have in, for the Board of Education to support the Health Services program in the district. Also, later this year, I think they're excited about this. It's going to be a change. We are transitioning to Infinite Campus. The Health Services module has a lot of capabilities that right now Tyler maybe is not as agile with, so I think they're really excited. We have some lead nurses that are going to help us design and develop just some of the workflow that's going to happen with that. And so they're going to have an extensive amount of training at the end of this year, end of next school year, so they can have a smooth transition, especially when we have to get immunizations in, physicals, all of those things that that team is really required to support as we transition into the new Infinite Campus. I would be remiss not to just thank just the work that these nurses and healthroom assistants do every day. I mean, they come to work sometimes maybe when they're not feeling great, or they have family that are not feeling well, to support kids in buildings. And it's just an amazing group of educators that do different levels of work, but are really, really integral into the work of the district. So Jen Ahearn is the leader of that group. She makes everything function, so I give a lot of credit to her, and I also give some credit to Cindy O'Brien. She always helps me get the data together, as well as she takes care of all their budget and all of their organizational factors for the, for all the health rooms throughout the district. So the two of them are really doing a great job supporting all the work and efforts that this team is doing. So I am very proud of the work, and they're a great asset to our school district. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to all of the health staff, because obviously, I mean, I agree, the numbers are just staggering. Every year, I'm like, what? And on e-boards, you broke it down in a little bit easier format for people to understand, so if anybody wants to check that out, that's also there. But thank you very much for all that work.
Yeah, I appreciate taking the time to put those breakdowns on those charts and the e-board questions. That was very helpful, so thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Okay, next up is Strategic Plan, Effective and Efficient, Dr. Jeff Bressler.
Yeah, as you know, each month, each board meeting, we give an update on components of our strategic plan. This evening, I'm going to just briefly talk a little bit about how we strive for effective and efficient operations throughout our district. Our goal in being effective, efficient, obviously, is our number one priority, which is our students, and how we could be responsible stewards of our resources, and how we can have impact for our classrooms. have impact for our classrooms. As you see above, these are five just example strategies that you will see in our strategic plan that I'll speak to this evening. One, obviously, being a balanced budget alignment with being with our strategic plan is implemented at a building level, through our building level improvement plans. And then when we walk into classrooms or when we're observing classrooms, that those same alignment is occurring across all levels. Also, our investments, as well as our continued ongoing stakeholder engagement that we strive for as well. When you think of a school district, our size with 19 schools, roughly 10,000 students, nearly what, 1,800-ish employees, it's very easy to get caught into different directions. But as we do this, it always reminds me of alignment. When we're aligned, Dr. Hogg has helped us a lot with that, is staying aligned is when we see growth. When we are aligned to the same goals, we have more momentum that we build. Celebrations, these are just some, obviously, as you heard this evening from parents, teachers, early childhood, up to Mr. Wendell's work. A lot of these celebrations are evidenced in every meeting, but we, some of them that are implemented or shown in our strategic plan that we would forecast is our MSEP 6 is our first year of MSEP 6 being implemented in all of our school improvement plans for this school year. The implementation of PLCs, something that we've also had a strong leadership focus on in ensuring that we're having that PLC process across all buildings. Also, our responsibilities with our audits, also system-wide success, that was like the best part of my day today, was Melville mentions. Those are always a shining moment. I think you probably see some on Facebook and things like that, but walking into teachers' classrooms or employees and approaching them with honoring them with a celebration, not that we came up with, but one of their colleagues came up with, definitely one of the highlights of all of our experiences throughout a school week. The impact of Proposition E, we're seeing that higher recruitment and obviously our retention rates we're finding at this time of the year for projections moving forward. We have that starting to take place and being in real time with us. Also showcasing our progress in Prop S with those scheduling outlooks, with the examples and updates that we got this evening as well. One exciting thing, by the summer, every school in our district will have either completed construction or be under construction, and that will be by the, throughout the summer. I believe there was a little bit of adjustment with, I think, Washington Middle School, which would begin some of that work, but that might be more fall. So definitely a celebration that we're getting to see throughout our district. And again, what does that do? Gives increased accountability for us to focus on student success. Also, effective and efficient with our continued focus, obviously on a balanced budget and appropriate cash reserves. These are, Dr. DeKemper said this to me the other day and it stuck out in my mind, with some of these conversations that we have are the same conversations that you and we have at a kitchen table with your families when you talk about planning and what's best for your family and the things of how we move things around and what our priorities are. We do that often in trying to make sure that, number one, what's best for either our children or our family are the same thing that we're doing at our level for students. Effective and efficient alignment, this is an exciting piece that I get to experience often, and it's essentially the creation of our strategic plan has allowed us to implement those building improvement plans and seeing in the classroom, and that's what we're doing through different venues such as a restructuring of our instructional leadership meetings involving all administrators. When we have those monthly meetings with all administrators, that focuses on instruction, not management, not other types of things that take us in different directions, but a qualified amount of time spent specifically on instructional practices as administrators. Also, that building administrator focus on instructional leaderships, how can we manage our time so that we are focused more on instruction in our classrooms. Monthly BSEP meetings, those are another highlight of our months when we are in buildings, having those accountability meetings, whether it's with a cabinet member, Dr. DeKemper, myself, sitting with our building administrators, talking about their plans, working with ways to improve their practices in their building to see results. Our four directors, I believe, this is our first year, it feels like it's been longer, our first year of having a content area director for all content areas. So all four directors that we have throughout our teaching and learning department. Also, that's another thing this year that is new, is how we have utilized them in our approach to really focusing on being in the buildings, working with building administrators. We say they're our instructional leaders. You will see them now in our PLC meetings, in our classroom, in our classrooms, in our data team meetings, you will see them working with teachers. And whenever you talk to a team, or I'm talking to a, to a group of teachers, they always talk about the positives that come from, from that, from our directors, which is also that alignment piece. Our school improvement plans are modeling that template from MSEP 6. I know we've worked a little bit on that over the summer, and that's taking place as well. System-wide classroom walkthrough tool, this is another thing, I keep saying Dr. Hogg, but he did come in with some great ideas that we have had great success with, celebration, definitely of success, that charge for us to be in classrooms for a purpose, and that's to use an observation tool. We use an observation tool, walkthrough tool. As of right now, that number's different than what you saw on your upload, that's really, it's correct now because it's a live tool as of today. 4,375 classroom observations have been completed throughout our district, something to be celebrated, and that's an exciting opportunity for us to learn as administrators, as well as supporting our teachers. Real-time analysis of instructional practices. We go into classrooms, we're checking for, for things and such as, one, student engagement, two, instructional strategy, what is the instructional strategy that's taking place? Doing an instructional practice inventory on what, from levels one through six, what level of instruction is occurring, and then also that depth of knowledge that's taking place or whatever that lesson is. So definitely checking for constant and consistent implementation of best practices in our classrooms. Another visual representation, this is something when you say 555 to our buildings, our teachers, our classrooms, our data teams. This is a simple way that we've really been able to streamline. We have so many different things that we ask our teachers to focus on. This has just been one thing this first semester that I feel like has been articulated to our teachers, and they found useful. And it's just simple, just that five interventions, those five engagement strategies, and those five high-level instructional strategies, Marzano's strategies that we look for for a high impact in classrooms. So we're using these best practices, we're using those in that classroom observation tool. Teachers can refer to this, and obviously, there's more links that are included to take them back to not a specific type of model, but a ways of engaging our students and learning, whether it's think pair share, stand, stand up pair up, we won't do it right now, but round robin, quiz, quiz, trade, all those things. Also, our effective and efficient ways that we have had cyclical investments in our infrastructure and transportation, as well as our other resources in our district. Another celebratory fact, and I think this is not new to you, but some of the completed projects have been articulated. These are some of the completed project, most of them that have been completed with our Prop S. So it's that accountability, how are we being effective with our Prop S funds? Also, continued ongoing stakeholder engagement of our, of our community. I think I answered some questions for you in regards to that. We had one in fall of '22. Our next survey that we have planned is for the fall of 2024. Doesn't mean that we're not engaging our stakeholders with other types of surveys. I listed some of those things such as thought exchanges, when you need feedback on, on things throughout our community, our schools use through panorama surveys, there's a multitude of other surveys, but this is, these are the two that are done through that research firm. Also, continuing to update our facilities with active engagement of others. Here's an example of our architect working at Oakville Middle, I think this was actually a couple of weeks ago, getting constant feedback, not just from our community, but also the people in the building. They're working actively with us in order to, one, have safe learning environments, as well as an ever-changing environment based on our student needs. As I said, this evening is not an actionable item that we're asking for approval on anything. This is just an update to you as part of our strategic plan. There's no board action required this evening for this item.
All right.
Thank you for all that you do, the support that you give us.
Thank you.
For our district.
It's great to hear of all the new systems that we have in place, so congratulations, and we very much appreciate it. Anybody have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, guys.
Next is, what is next? Budget Development, Dr. Hogg.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Jeff Hogg. I'm the Superintendent of Schools. Tonight, I am going to fill in for our CFO and present the budget development. We are in the early stages of budget development. We do this every spring. The board must approve a budget by June 30th, and so we're going to start that process. We've historically started this presentation about this time of year so that we and the board know exactly what we're doing by June. And so kind of along those lines, what we're talking about tonight is the debt portion, and so that is from Prop S. So that is our debt. The school district has four funds. One is the general fund, the second is the teacher fund. That third fund, though, is that we have borrowed money, and we set aside a certain levy, it's 12 cents in this case, to pay that back over time. And so like I said, this is the debt portion of the budget. It's for Prop S. All of our other debt is paid off. So outside of Prop S, outside of that $35 million that we borrowed, we don't have any other debt, and that's, that's a pretty good place to be. So it was, Prop S was a general obligation bond passed in April of 2021, and we decided to use that 12 cents from the operating levy that was paying off our certificates of participation. So we moved that 12 cents from operating to debt service to cover that. Again, it was a $35 million bond issue. We ended up with 37.7 million because the people who wanted to buy our bonds and get that 3% interest rate paid a premium. And so that extra $2 million or so is a premium that comes to us throughout that process. The bonds pay, like I said, 3% to investors. Right now, as you saw in slides earlier, we've expended about 19.9 million of that 35 or that 37 with about 18 million left. So the rationale this evening is to go ahead, our debt is solidified for the next several years. We know what we're paying in both principal and interest. So this is just a good, easy place to start and ease into budget. So for example, next year, the principal will pay, we're paying down that 35 million, we'll pay over the life of the bond issue a $12.1 million in interest. And so that's put into your payments each year. So for example, next year, we will have a debt service payment for the principal of that, of Prop S, of $1.5 million. We will pay 961,000 in interest. So that kind of shows you our payment. Plus, next year, we're going to pay in your Fund III, and this is kind of getting a little into detail. In Fund III, you can't build up too much of a balance. You can't go over your 100%. And so if you do, you have to prepay a little bit. So we're going to prepay about $625,000 next year, which will save us, I think, 281,000 in interest as we go into life of that loan. So you'll hear us talk about prepaying a little bit. So for next year, with the balance being up in Fund III, you can only spend it on one thing, and that's paying down. So we'll pay that off a little bit early. But again, so the total debt expense for next year will be about $3 million towards our GO bonds, towards Prop S. Again, this is just an update. This is the beginning of the budget process, it's very early. We'll continue to bring budget back to you, we'll continue to bring revenue and expenditures back as well. So I just wanted to give you an update this evening. No action is required. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Do they have anything?
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Okay. Moving on to action items by consent, does anyone need to pull anything? Okay, if I could please get a motion to approve action items by consent, A through H.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. We do not have anybody signed up for open period patron comments on non-agenda items, so Patrick, if you could put us in to close, please?
Motion enter closed session meeting for the purpose of reading a minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri Revised Statute 610.021 subsections 1 through 21 and 610.022 subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, section 610.0213, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment, section 610.02113.
Okay, Scott?
Yes.
Jeff?